From Monday, September 24th, 2012, at the official AT&amp;T time of 7:04 PM. The Board May Be in Closed Session to Deliberate the Appointment Employment -- do we have five? Okay, good. Appointment Employment Evaluation Reassignment Duties Dismissed Dismissal of Public Officer or Employee Including Superintendent's Evaluation, Deliberation of the Purchase, Exchange, Lease, or Value of Real Property, Deliberation by Negotiated Contract, Perspective Gift to the District, and Deliberation of Commercial or Financial Information that the Board has received from Business Prospect, Deliberation of the Offer of or of Financial Incentive or Other Incentive to a Business Prospect and to Consult with Legal Counsel regarding Penning or Content Litigation or an Estable Offer on a Matter of Schools' Legal Counsel Determination should be Confidential in accordance with Chapter 551 of Texas Government Code, Sections 551.074, 551.072, 551.073, 551.087, and 551.071, respectively. Welcome, everybody. Is there motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. President, we have approval.
Is there a second? Second, Ms. Torres, all in favor of that motion, please raise your right hand. Passion and answer, we thank you, Board. Now we have the pledge. Let's welcome our young friends and students from Cunningham Elementary. Give them a big round of applause. Four full weeks into the school year and they're rocking it. Starting week five, I guess. Welcome. So y'all are in charge.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every routine justice for all.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and freedom for all.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one indivisible.
Okay, if you could introduce us to everybody here today from Cunningham, that would be great. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Amy Lloyd, the proud principal of Cunningham Elementary.
It's okay to give Amy a big round of applause.
Thank you. And tonight, the adults we have with us, other than the parents, are some teachers. We have fifth grade teacher Emily Smith. She is our Teacher of the Year and one of the 24 semifinalists this past year. We have Mr. Michael Griffin, fourth grade teacher. And we have Mr. Mark Woofenden, fifth grade teacher. And students, when I call your name, will you raise your hand up and wave to the board so they know who you are? I have Shelby Harrison, Robert Garcia, Jorge Escalante, Gabriela Velos, Iana Enquist, Sophia McGlaughlin, Narith Garcia, Jack Torones, Megan Guzman, Charlie Gacharna, and Andres Gomez. Thank you all very much.
Did I get everybody?
Did we get everybody?
Everybody? Okay, good.
All right.
Welcome. Congratulations. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. It's an honor.
Let's go down in front, so we don't -- no, we'll go down here. Come on up. Okay, and I think Principal Lloyd mentioned there were -- thanks for being here -- that there were some parents and family members as well, so if you could stand up, we'd like to appreciate and recognize you as well for supporting these wonderful students. We love having the kids here, and in many meetings, it's the best part of our meeting. But not always. But it's great. So thank y'all for being here. So y'all have a great school year. I would say we'd love for you to stay, but since y'all are in elementary school, it's probably good for y'all to go back. So thanks for being here. Let's wave at all of our Cunningham friends and tell them bye, and families and friends and students and teachers and staff and principals. Thank y'all. I say it's normally the best because sometimes we also have some educators that have done some incredible things, too. So sometimes it's hard to compete with kids, but in this case tonight, I know we've got some great stuff happening. Okay, the -- we have a public hearing this evening on the school's financial integrity rating system for 2011, but I've been informed that we didn't have anybody sign up. Is that right? So we won't have that public hearing, but it was published and it was -- would have been people's opportunity to comment about the school's financial integrity rating system. And we'll look forward, people have comments and didn't able to make it tonight, feel free to email us or call us, and we'll be glad to take that input. Okay, so we will --
Do we have to report by law?
We will now -- yeah, sorry. Let's have a presentation about that.
Just really quick.
Even in the absence of comments, I think it's important to get an update on what's happening. So Dr. Karstoffen.
Yes, sir. Mr. President and trustees, in 2001, the Texas Legislature established an accountability system to evaluate the financial health of every school district. The purpose is to ensure that school districts and open enrollment charter schools are held accountable for the quality of their financial management practices and achieve improved performance in the management of their financial resources. Each year, under the Financial Integrity Rating Management -- I mean Integrity Rating System of Texas, or F-I-R-S-T, school districts receive a rating. School boards are required to report on the ratings, and a public hearing must be held to give the public an opportunity to comment. Mr. President and trustees, I am happy to report that for 2012, the Austin Independent School District received the highest rating of superior achievement with the highest possible score in all 20 indicators. AISD also received the maximum score and earned the gold level in the Comptroller's Leadership Circle for the third time in a row, one of just a handful of Texas governmental entities that has achieved this level of consistent financial transparency. In addition, the district earned a debt rating of AAA from Moody's Investors Service and a AA from Standards and Poor's and a AA plus from Fitch Ratings. These continue to be among the highest ratings available by these three rating agencies to Texas public schools. And so we just want to ensure that the district did its duty to report on our financial integrity rating.
And thank you, Dr. Karstoffen, and congratulations to your team for their excellent work this year, again, on that rating. Thank you for doing that. As I mentioned, there will not be a public hearing on that because we had no one to sign up. I also failed to mention, I did get a message from trustee Christine Brister, who said she will be late this evening. She's dealing with some issues that she will try to get here as quickly as she can. As I think most people know, Board members actually have other responsibilities, other jobs, and she is on her way, but will get here as quickly as she can. Okay, thank you very much. Any comments or questions about the first rating from the Board? Okay, thank -- Ms. Snyder.
I just want to make a brief request. Dr. Karstoffen, if you could have staff compare and contrast the first versus the FAST rating at some point, just to help the Board understand the differences between the two and how our rating difference is, I would appreciate that, so.
Okay, thanks. Okay, thank you very much, Board members, and Dr. Karstoffen and Ms. Conley Abram and team for all the excellent work. Okay, Board, we're now going to move to Citizens Communication, and this is the time we dedicated each regularly scheduled public meeting for public comments. And under the Opens Meetings Law, the rules of this Board, there will not be a dialogue between persons at the microphone and the dais, but we'll be taking notes. In order to provide as many opportunities as possible for input within a limited time period, each speaker will be allotted two minutes with a maximum of 30 speakers allowed. As is the Board's longstanding practice, speakers must have signed up in person and cannot yield their time to others. The Board will not allow substitutions and yield any of time. As you come to the microphones, the device that will light up as you move through your two minutes of allotted time, when the buzzer sounds, please take the opportunity to sum up your comments so we can move on to the next person. Each person who signed up will have the opportunity to address the Board. If you wish to address the Board this evening, we're not called, which will not be the time that we have this evening, because I think we only have seven people signed up, but please know that you can submit your comments in writing to the trustees at austinisd.org or you can -- if you're still faxing, you can always fax at (512) 414-1486. And we ask whether you come to give praise or complaint that you reference the staff member by position or by abbreviated last name, for example, Mr. D. or Ms. A., unless you're addressing Superintendent's Schools or the Board, then feel free to address us directly. The district is a local governmental body charged with the serving of the education needs of all students, and both Board meetings must be focused on making meeting that charge. All regular Board meetings are televised and rebroadcast on AISD Cable Channel 22 and over the AISD website. We ask that audience members, whether speaking or not, please show respect for all others at all times, and the Communications Services Department provides a Spanish-language translator for audience members who need translational assistance when addressing trustees or need assistance understanding comments made to trustees during Citizens Communication. And if you need this service during other portions of the meeting, please speak with the interpreter. And Ruby Azar Shea, welcome, is one of our communications specialists, and she'll repeat this message in Spanish.
Buenas noches, Mesa Directiva, Presidente Williams, Superintendent Karstoffen, mi nombre es Ruby Azar Shea. Soy interpreta del distrito y estoy aquí esta noche para ofrecer mis servicios de interpretación a las personas que los necesiten. Gracias.
Great, thank you. Okay, I'm going to call them in groups of three, and I have the -- I think the first couple three will all be a combo effort. So Gloria Williams, Carrie Parker, Sheila Thomas, so our first three.
President Williams, members of the Board, and Superintendent Karstoffen. We all know those kids are incredible, and we really, really appreciate their time here, and we all know we have to have incredible teachers to be with them. My name is Carrie Parker, and I'm the president of the A+ Education Foundation. I'm here with Sheila Thomas, A+ Education Foundation Board Member, and Dr. Gloria Williams, A+ Federal Credit Union Supervisory Committee Member. We're pleased to be here this evening to recognize 2012 AISD grant recipients. The Education Foundation was established and developed by the credit union in 2005 to provide grants to full-time educators in grades pre-K through 12 to help them reaching their educational goals. Since its inception, the foundation has given over $387,000 in grants, and of this amount, $91,000 has been awarded to over 95 AISD educators. For 2012 grant programs, 74 Austin-area educators were awarded over $67,000, and 15 of those are grant recipients from AISD. Join me in congratulating and recognizing the 2012 AISD grant recipients. Grant recipients, please stand as your name is called. Eileen Brady from Baldwin Elementary School, saying goodbye to Friday spellers, she's a three-time grant recipient. Susanna Amenhouser from Cassis Elementary, third-time recipient for Texas Blue Bell -- excuse me, Texas Bluebonnet Reading. Jennifer D. Atkinson, Cunningham Elementary, third-time recipient for Scholar Pride. Melissa Prepster, Garricki Middle School, Flip the Past, Think Like an Historian. James M. Butler, Galette Elementary School, iPad Center in Pre-K Classroom. Tina L. Lewis, Lanier High School, Assisted Technology for Adapted PE. Ronnie Rissinger, Liberal Arts and Science Academy High School, Aim for Europe, Better Intentas for Bigger Signals. Diana L. McMillan, Matthews Elementary School, Turn the Page. Dr. Anna Pedroza, Ortega Elementary School, she's a six-time recipient for Science and Math in Grade Outdoors. Roger Alvarado, Ortega Elementary School, third-time recipient, Robotics, a Universal Language. Catherine King, second-time recipient from Pierce Middle School, Luring Students Into Social Studies Nonfiction. And Sharon Stoner, a third-time recipient from Pleasant Hill Elementary School, Dyslexia, Reading, Writing Connection. Gail Lubenthal, a fifth-time recipient from Sanchez Elementary School, for Nature Explorers. Deborah Hurst, Wyden Elementary School, a fourth-time recipient from Jump Start to First Grade. And Marcella Sanz Blanco, Wyden Elementary School, and I'm just going to call it Implementation of a Spanish Reading Lab, because it's in Spanish. Thank you.
Okay, that's great. So Board members, I wouldn't let Carrie just read all that. Thank you so much to A+ for all of that. I know that other people who signed up to just shift the reading, but we appreciate you're kind of putting it all together and doing it once. Congratulations to all the staff, and thank you to A+ for making this happen.
Thank you.
And y'all are welcome to stay as long as you want. But if you scoot out of here quickly, then we may whoop it like we didn't even notice you were leaving. Because you've got to catch us on TV before it's over. So thank y'all, congratulations.
But we appreciate you.
Okay, now we'll move Steve Swanson, Robert Martinez, and Laura Morgan Reinhardt. Welcome, Mr. Swanson.
Good evening. My name is Steve Swanson. We are here tonight to ask for your help in meeting to focus on opportunities for leadership and action to serve our students. And we have a copy of our request. We trust you have read our August 8th letter to President Williams, requesting an informal conference referenced in AISD policy to resolve issues pertaining to Board responsibilities for community-based leadership in planning and serving our students stated in the Texas Education Code and AISD policy, and present recommendations we are sharing with people from throughout the state. And please join us September 30th at Tassit-Tasby. President Williams has informed us the Board cannot convene this conference, and we must invite you. In addition to the invitation in our August 8th letter, we request that by this Friday, each Board member responds to us. Email is preferred to state your response to our August 8th letter, whether or not you will participate as a quorum in an informal restorative conference, and who should schedule the conference. There are opportunities to demonstrate community-based leadership. Before this Friday, please contact all the joint subcommittees, that's the city AISD and county task forces, and ask, "How are we doing?", the current status of their work and why, and the status of designing and implementing work plans with timelines, connecting stakeholders, and regular monitoring of progress. Pause all AAFR activities and evaluate the current planning process to then improve. Also, please obtain all documentation of activities performed by AISD since August of 2008, including Board members and campus CACs, for all plans and budgets for Pierce Middle School, Allen Elementary School, and Eastside Memorial High School at Johnson Campus. Please present the results to the public before October 5th. We appreciate your timely response and look forward to meeting regarding the opportunities and responsibilities for leadership provided in state statute and district policies. Thank you.
Robert Martinez, Laura Morgan Reinhardt, and Cheryl Prater.
I'm Robert Martinez. For the past four years, Steve and I have been involved with our youth and parents in our public schools, and I'm here to tell you how important it is for our community to work together with our children. While there are many helpful and meaningful activities going on, there seems to be no concentrated effort to really involve the parents and community in a partnership manner at each of our schools. That is, to have decision-making committees, community-based, at every school, and to create at every campus, a safe nurturing and learning environment where the parents and teachers and students and business and educational institutions are all working together for the benefit of all our children. There is no concentrated effort. Tonight, we are asking, we are challenging you, the Board members, to take the leadership role, to take the leadership role to ensure that safe nurturing learning environments take place at every school, east and west, north and south. I recently saw the Ron Clark story movie where the teacher, through his commitment efforts and sacrifices, turned teenagers from failing to passing and achieving. For through his sacrifice, he finally convinced them that they did have value, they were smart, and that through their hard work could achieve greatness, and that someone really believed in them. Through his efforts and sacrifice, he gave meaning to the words, "I care for all of you." So only through your sacrifice and the policies that you make can you ensure that all the students have a safe nurturing learning environment, and that teachers and parents and students and business leaders and community leaders are all working together in a caring way for all of the children to succeed. By your commitment and sacrifice, you can help make this happen.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Laura Morgan Reinhardt and Cheryl Prater.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. I am a pediatric dental hygienist here in Austin for Dr. Dani Watts. We see a large population of underprivileged children who are not getting help with their oral hygiene at home and are suffering with dental caries. Dental caries is the number-one disease amongst children in the United States. Dental caries are completely preventable with the right home care routine and proper training and education. Ninety percent of my population, my patient population, only brush one time per day. Several children will skip days of brushing. If you have kids, I'm sure you know what I'm talking about. This is not enough tooth brushing frequency to prevent cavities in children. It only takes four to six hours for plaque to reaccumulate on our teeth after we've brushed. To add to this, children have a higher prevalence of cavities compared to adults because of their diets. Bacteria that cause cavities are fed by carbohydrate foods like juices, crackers, and cookies, common snacks amongst the younger population. I'm here to ask for implementation of a brushing program in all elementary schools in Austin. First, I'd like you to -- I'd like to share some statistics with you. Forty-two percent of children age two to five and 51 percent of children age six to 11 have dental cavities in their baby teeth. Twenty-one percent of children six to 11 have dental cavities in their permanent teeth. Our government funds an outrageous amount of spending for Medicaid, paying for fillings, crowns, and root canals to fix these dental caries. In the year 2010, we spent $27 billion in the state of Texas. The entire U.S. spent $389 billion. I want to improve these statistics and teach these children that brushing should be a routine. My wish is for children to brush their teeth right after lunch with a dry toothbrush. Using a dry brush removes 60% more plaque than a wet brush or one with toothpaste. Plus, any parent against using fluoride, we wouldn't have to go that -- we wouldn't have to battle that issue. It's just a dry brush. I've spoken to many teachers who have said that washing hands is a daily routine anyway, so the child would just have to pick their toothbrush out of this pouch that I've sewn. And it's a travel toothbrush, so it has a cap over it that I can't get off, of course. Anyways, it comes off, and then they'd put it back on and put it back in their designated pouch after brushing their teeth and washing their hands after lunch. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Cheryl Prater, welcome.
It's Dr. Karstoffen, President Williams, and Board members. I've come tonight to thank you for naming the Southeast Early Childhood Center after Anita Uphaus. I work with the ACE PALS program out there at Uphaus Center as well at Lucy Reed. You know, it's very beautiful, and it is a fitting tribute to a woman who gave her life for early young learners. So I thank you, and I welcome you all to come and visit us. I'll see you at the dedication ceremony. Thanks again.
That's great. Thank you. Okay, Board, that's all of the folks signed up for Citizens Communication this evening. We thank the public for their input, and obviously, Dr. Karstoffen, there's a couple things to maybe think about in that mix. Okay, Board, we will now turn to the consent -- Mr. Torres.
Mr. Williams, do we have a date set for the dedication ceremony for the Anita Uphaus?
Yes, we do.
I can -- if --
We'll get it out, email to the Board members.
Yeah, we've -- it's on your planning sheet, but we'll get it again.
We'll work on that.
I'll try to downset it for a second.
I think I'll look at the yellow sheet in a minute. Okay, thanks. Good question. We'll get that out. Okay, we'll now turn to the consent agenda, Board members. There are items 11 through 16, so I will entertain a motion on that.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
Move approval of consent agenda items 11 through 12, items 13.2 through 16.
Is there a second, Ms. Snyder? Are you okay with that?
Second, yes.
Okay, all in favor of that motion, please raise your right hand. Passion and answer, please. Thank you, Board members, for those here tonight, and let's go to 13.1. Ms. Snyder.
Yes, Dr. Karstoffen, I wanted to have some discussion of the weighted student formula issue in 13.1, if I can, please. My reading of the agenda item seems to indicate that the Board will implement weighted student formula in the 1415 budget. It's actually a little bit of a contradiction. In one place, it says we will implement it in 1415, and another place in the agenda item, it says possible implementation in 1415. So I'm trying to get some clarification. I know when we discuss this item at the treat, the intent of the discussion or the -- it seemed to me the intent of the Board, and this is even after the September 10th Board Work Session Discussion on the Item, was that we were still looking at a grant as to studying this issue, determining possible invitation, what kind of manner in which it would be implemented, a number of different things. But your response to an email query of mine seemed to indicate that it was going to happen rather than it was a possibility of happening. So I'm trying to get some clarification on it, if I can, please.
So, Dr. Karstoffen?
Go ahead.
Well, I was going to say, if I've ever --
Okay. Second? Okay. So can we move for, maybe to vote? Let's pull that one separately and maybe vote on the rest, just to get them knocked out.
Sounds like a good idea.
Okay. So let's, why don't you reset motion, and then we'll get your second to...
Move approval of consent agenda items 11 through 12, items 13.2 through 16.
Is there a second, Mr. Snyder? Are you okay with that?
Second, yes.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, please raise your right hand. Passionately, thank you, board members, for those here tonight, and let's go to 13.1. Ms. Snyder.
Yes, Dr. Karstharfen, I wanted to have some discussion of the weighted student formula issue in 13.1, if I can, please. My reading of the agenda item seems to indicate that the board will implement weighted student formula in the 1415 budget. It's actually a little bit of a contradiction. In one place, it says we will implement it in 1415, and another place in the agenda item, it says possible implementation in 1415. So I'm trying to get some clarification. I know when we discussed this item at the retreat, the intent of the discussion, or it seemed to me, the intent of the board, and this is even after the September 10th board work session discussion on the item, was that we were still looking at a grant as to studying this issue, determining possible invitation, what kind of manner in which it would be implemented, a number of different things. But your response to an email query of mine seemed to indicate that it was going to happen rather than it was a possibility of happening. So I'm trying to get some clarification on it, if I can, please.
So, Dr. Karstharfen?
Go ahead.
Well, I was gonna say, if I recall from the retreat, and other board members can clarify for me, there were, the way the wording of this particularly says, "We'll research and analyze the options associated with implementation." Certainly, one of the options is we don't do anything, right? But more likely, there's an option that says we need to do something. And as I recall, the discussion with Ms. Conley Abram, at least from my perspective, was there was, and even here at our work session last week, two weeks ago, whenever it was, there was discussion about the potential variables at which you might be looking at, the phasing-in timing, that it was really trying to move down the path, and that the board would be committed to doing that, to moving down the path. But again, at the end of the day, the board retains the right to choose whether they want to do something or not. So I don't know that I perceive that there's a fixed commitment that absolutely something's gonna happen, but that it is a commitment that we're gonna analyze and investigate, and look at the options, and try to find out what might make the best sense for our district. Dr. Karstharfen, do you have anything to add to that?
A couple of things. Mr. President, trustees of the board, trustee Schneider, the first thing is, yes, we had the retreat, but, you know, at the retreat, we can't make formal decisions or vote on anything. So we had a subsequent discussion at the work session, and it was at that work session that, you know, I worked carefully with the board president to reshape the language on number 12, to indicate that we would be moving down the path in the, do the 1213, 1314 school years, as we tried to explore what might be an approach to do two things that were articulated as values in the board-approved strategic plan. Being more child-centered, in other words, a use-funding formula that is based on students, not staffing. And the second piece, which is another value of the board, is equity. Now, the challenge, I think, for this board is that you're right, you don't have a crystal ball, and you don't know what it's gonna look like ultimately in the end. And that's why we, you know, plan to bring forward options associated with some potential implementation around a change that is more student-focused. But because we know we have such great diversity in this district, we would call it a weighted student formula, in large part because of the different needs that kids have. I think the issue, Mr. Schneider, that you're talking about, that leads to the potential for an implementation of a different resource allocation model in the 1415 school year, is tied to us being transparent with potential funders. I want to be crystal clear. This administration, this district, your current budget, does not have enough resources in it for us to dedicate what it would mean for the district to try to investigate and then ultimately implement some change about the way we do our funding. If we don't partner with a funder, we don't have any additional resources. So it is more, at least from the perspective of the administration, we've heard more times, you know, over the last three and a half years, that the issue of equity and the distribution of resources in our schools was something that we wrote into our strategic plan for a reason. If the board believes that as an option, we're not going to do anything, and I think this is the hair between the two, I recommend you do not accept money from the foundations. What's clear to me in the expectation is that they want to do performance, or performance management structures, which is one of the priorities for the last two years that the board has articulated. And in doing those kinds of, those approaches, it means that you're reforming some of your systems. In this case, it's the funding strategy. So I think it's a bigger question of whether or not the board wants to go down the path of really wrestling with equity, and what that means in our allocations to schools. But this is a big investment. It's gonna be close to $2 million, about $1.9 million of partner resources to help us figure this out for the next two years. But you can anticipate that in the options, and I guess I should say, it's true, the board can decide to do nothing. It's, the last word is your word. But what the administration would be recommending in being true to our partnership is a change. And so, but you do have the last word, so you could ultimately decide to do nothing. But I know the administration will be working down a path to bring you a new formula design. And to get there, we're gonna have to have tons of community involvement. That's a lot of what the grants pay for, and a lot of people with outstanding expertise in public education finance to help us build our capacity to understand how to unpack our budget and then repack it in options that won't break the bank, and that will bring you the kinds of answers to questions that have plagued this district for a long time. So it does say in that 12th item, Mr. Schneider, that the research and analyzing the options, from our perspective, we're recommending that you do it with the intent to implement some different kind of funding model that has student needs at the forefront.
So, Dr. Karstharfen, just making sure, so there's a parameter that says we're committed to looking, investigating, analyzing. There, what people probably don't see in the thing is that there's a potential funder for a very large project, because this is not a simple effort. I mean, it seems like we're gonna move from our current staffing-based model to a weighted student formula, but who knows what it's gonna look like, what the weights are, what the school finance settlement might be from the litigation, what the state funding formula's gonna be. So understanding all this and looking at where we are now, where we're gonna be in the future, is very complex. And as you described, there's a significant amount of community engagement that will need to occur as we potentially move down the path. As we know, there was a recent report from the Texas Civil Rights Project, right or wrong, but it certainly asserted that there's inequity in the funding formulas that we currently have today. And right now, absent doing an analysis to demonstrate that's right or wrong, people can draw whatever conclusions they want from it. I think we do try to do a better job than probably most districts of allocating funding. But I think you've hit on it, is it's gonna come up with some options, of which there might be a variety, both in terms of weights and timing. But you can't guarantee that we'll do anything, I guess, in the sense, the board, whatever board is at that point in time, could vote to not do anything, just keep it the way it is today. I think it's highly unlikely that there won't be some change based on what we learn, but in concept, I guess it's possible. But at the end of the day, the board does retain the right to vote, but the administration's intent, as I understand you, is that you're planning on moving down a path to create what would hopefully be a more informed, more transparent, equitable funding formula. And the board's gonna have to then decide whether they think that's the right thing to do or not. But the board will ultimately retain the right. This parameter just basically says you're committed to launching that next school year, that effort.
Launching, launching the effort, not a formula.
Not the formula or the implementation. Okay, Ms., I mean, Ms. Snyder hasn't finished, maybe, and then Mr. Moya.
Well, Ms. Moya, why don't you go ahead? I'm still working on what I'm gonna say.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to add to some of what's already been said, which is, it's apparent, not because of the recent report that came out by the Civil Rights Project, but, but something that many board members on the dais have spoken about in the past, at least in the past six years, that there's, that there are some inequities in funding and looking at other options, I think, is, is, you know, our responsibility and our fiduciary responsibilities to our school district and the taxpayers. Given the, given the situation with budgets and the legislature coming down next session, we don't know what we're gonna end up with, and we do have to have some ideas and some plans about how to, how to better fund our campuses, as well as making sure that all students at all campuses have the funding to provide the services that they need, because the children with, the children with, needing services are not limited to one part of town, they're all over town, and are all over the district. So, so we have to find a way in order to provide those services, and not doing so, in my opinion, is irresponsible to the children of the district, who we have the responsibility to educate. So, I mean, I think, I think it behooves us to, to do the research, do the test pilots, whatever it is we need to do in order to find out what's gonna work best for, for all children, given the funds that we have. And so if it takes us a year and a half, or a school year and a half to do it, that's great. And, and I, the sooner the better, as far as I'm concerned. So, you know, Dr. Karstharfen, I, I understand there's a possible funder, I understand what the, what the expectations of that funder would be, but I don't think that their funder's expectations are unrealistic, considering, considering that we've already, that we already know that, that there's gotta be a better way. And so I, I support the administration going forward with this and trying to find out how we can fund or provide services for our students in a better way, rather than staff, staff-based and student-service-based. Thank you.
Ms. Snyder, you ready?
Yeah, sure. Dr. Karstharfen, I'm reading from the first page of item 13.1. Next to the last paragraph on the page, point two says, "Adding a parameter that would allow the administration to initiate the planning and groundwork to implement a student-based allocation model, weighted student formula for 1415, in an effort to reduce inequities." It doesn't say we're gonna review things between now and then, we're gonna look at what might happen, we might wanna look at what those weights might be. It says, "We're going to implement this in 1415." And, you know, I have multiple issues with this. It, you know, this has had a three-hour, maybe four-hour discussion at a board retreat on the September 8th, an hour to maybe two hours of discussion on the following Monday, the 10th. There has been zero input from the public on this. We don't even have an agreement as to what inequities are. I, you know, the discussion on the 10th was very clear to me that there is no common agreement on this board as to what inequities are. And additionally, there has been absolutely no proof provided that changing the weighting or the way students are funding is going to increase student performance and school performance in any way. There's been absolutely nothing provided on that point with data from this district to this board. And, you know, as I've told you, and the question that I sent to you earlier, I'm all for doing a study. We can talk about what the inequities are, we can talk about what the weights may be. But I don't want to see this turn into a situation that, you know, people are gonna realize that there are going to be winners in this discussion, and there're gonna be losers as well, too. And when people start hearing about how the money from their campus is gonna end up going somewhere else because of weights that were established through a process that was initiated tonight, I don't think it's the right way to do it. And, you know, if we could separate this out, where we agreed to do the study, fine, as long as there's no strings attached to it, I'd be more than willing to support that.
Dr. Karstharfen.
So, Mr. President, trustee of the board, trustee Schneider, while, I mean, perhaps, I mean, that's, I mean, clearly, that's your perspective on how, and we got started on this conversation about equity, but as I recall, even before I was your superintendent, going out in the vetting period when I was offered the position, all, at all of those community meetings, this is exactly what people were talking about around their frustration with AISD and the lack of transparency around the way we do budgeting and provide resources for some schools. Some of it may be true, some of it may not be true, but because it's been such a black box for so long, you're right, we don't have a definition of equity. But I don't know how we're gonna get one if we don't do some work around it and have resources behind it to figure out what that definition is. We typically, when we come to the board to talk about things, your, your argument often is, "We would love to do this, but we don't have any resources to do it. We can't take this money out of the general fund. We should expect that the legislature's gonna take more money away from us." In this case, we, following three solid years of direction from the board in the strategic plan, where we even refreshed the strategic plan action item to be more reflective of where we were as a district, and I have articulated that before, that even after we did that, we took all these things to potential funders so that we could have resources in hand to be able to do the work that the board charges us. So here, at the end of the day, the bottom line for the administration is this, we got plenty of work to do in this district, with or without the, the funding formula discussion, plenty of work to do. We took it upon ourselves to honor the strategic plan and the order in which we're supposed to be launching these action items, and you gave me five years to do it, right? We're in year four, and this is where, if you're not starting something, then it's highly likely it's not gonna happen in five years. So we review that strategic plan with the board every year, the district advisory council looks at it, the budget and finance advisory committee, we haven't been doing these things in a vacuum. Now, I don't know where everybody's start point was, but it has been the thing on our table as an administration since before my start date. And I'm sure you all, you all have your own stories about how long it's been around AISD since, you know, the last administration, and even perhaps before you were on the school board. So, you know, for us, you don't have to do it. You gave us a problem and asked us to bring you a potential solution for, or not even a solution, an approach for how we might be able to get there. If the board is not prepared to do that, then I recommend you don't do it. And you absolutely don't take the resources of a partner, $1.9 million, and, and use it in a way that doesn't honor the approach that we were, you know, that we brought to them in the first place, which was our value statement, certainly the issues around trying to get through that, that strategic plan action item, on having money follow the kids somehow. But it's taken us three years to sort it out, to find somebody who's willing to fund system reform, and then ultimately help us build our capacity to be able to do it. But, you know, it's the board's parameters. If you don't wanna do it, tonight is the night to take it out, and to leave it out until you're ready. But I can tell you one thing for sure, we don't have $1.9 million in our general fund to be able to spend on our own, even a couple hundred thousand dollars, to explore by ourselves. But if you wanna, you know, figure out where to get that money and things of that sort, it's just gonna take us, you know, another year or so to figure that out through our next budget process. But what I feel like we've done as an administration is bring you our best hope of getting started on a very complex, almost will be an all-consuming effort for the next two years, so we might be in a better place by 1415 school year. And I don't know how it's all gonna turn out, but, but I do see it differently to what you're describing now. And we wouldn't even be here if it wasn't for our budget and finance advisory committee or the district advisory committee that has been working on this with us, you know, our, my entire tenure. But, you know, but it's, you know, we, we'll take your direction tonight and do whatever the board desires.
There is definitely some excitement, I think, for, and I'll speak for myself, around having found a funder to do this important work. But I want to make sure I understand what the board would be approving or not with this particular agenda item, based on where my, my understanding of the conversation and how we've gotten here. We did raise the issue of feeling like we were kinda putting the cart before the horse to approve moving forward with something. We weren't quite, until the study is done, we won't know what we're moving forward with. So just for, just because the agenda item does, I, I find it a little bit contradictory in places. What specifically is the board approving with this agenda item? And is it now, or is it the position that if we move forward with exploration, we are tacitly saying to funders, we are willing to move forward with implementation based on what comes out of the exploration or the study?
Mr. President, trustee of boards, trustee, Barksdale, I think it is certainly in the area of, we will work through the research, we will come up with options that are different to the staffing formula we have today, and that something in the change is leading us to a student-based formula. And like Mr. Williams described, I mean, I think y'all are gonna have iterations as you get there. It might, right now, we're 100%, you know, like staffing formula design, you know how that works. And, you know, over time, I think you're gonna see opportunities to make some adjustments. And in the end, you know, there may, there may be something that's more of a hybrid. I mean, I don't even know. It's, it's so hard to second, you know, to guess into this without getting into all of the AISD data, which we haven't, you know, have the opportunity, and nor do we have the systems to do unless somebody helps us build the systems. So right now, I think it's fair to say that we are far more on the side of, you will have, we are gonna create options. to say that we are far more on the side of, you will have, we are going to create options. And from those options, there will be something that's related to student-based formulas and kind of, you know, further supporting the notion of what we've had as a priority around a portfolio of options. And right now, it's very narrowly defined around school programming. But if you remember from the people who presented from the Center for Reinventing Education, Reinventing Public Education, they talked about portfolio of options that goes far larger than that and into big systems thinking. So, it's very hard to have this conversation without having flexibility and funding and a portfolio kind of go hand in hand. And how much those hands have to be linked and which digits exactly are the things that we can't answer today. So, yeah, you're taking, you know, a leap into, we know we have a challenge. We don't know what that solution's going to be, but it's not going to be what we have today. And, you know, that's the best we can offer at this moment in time. So, in this approval, while yes, it says moving down the path, that's in your budget parameter, number 12, to be crystal clear, it means that we're trying to certainly implement something different that has a student-based allocation as part of it by the time we're approaching the 1415 school year.
Let me follow up to that. So, just to be super, super double really clear, by approving this agenda item, the board would be essentially saying, and to trustee Snyder's point, without citizens' input on this or community input on this yet, wide, large, I know we've had committee and other work done and input on this. I understand the strategic plan. I understand the framework for how we've gotten here.
Okay.
But we would be saying, "We're moving down the path of weighted student formula for AISD," by approving this agenda item.
What I would say is we're moving down the path of, we're moving down the path of a student-based formula, which is often referred to as weighted student formula and those kinds of things. But, I mean, I'm not hung up on those three words, weighted student formula.
Well, me either.
But I guess I just wanted to be as clear as possible because you're asking for it. It's a student-based allocation model. But what I would say is you can anticipate a robust discussion and some kind of option that's going to talk about weights, because that's typically how the research is done. We are a district. We're not homogeneous. So, you're going to see that that is going to bubble up. I think that's just part of the context of who we are as an urban system. So, the conversation about weights, fair enough, it's going to be there.
Right. So, if I, so we'll have guardrails up. If we're going student-based formula, the board is setting the guardrails. The community would then weigh in to say, "Well, this is how we would like it to look." So, their choice is made by this, moving forward in this way to student-based formula. We got the guardrails. Then people would fill in.
Right. That's where we need a ton of community engagement.
But we tonight will be setting the guardrails. We're done.
Well, you'll be setting it up for us to start the exploration, and the guardrails are around moving toward that student-based allocation.
Okay.
And even the Center for Reinventing Public Education kept saying, they hated calling it weighted student formula. They know that what they're doing is around having a student-based focus so that money really does, you know, follow the kids. But as Mr. Williams and I, you know, continue to, you know, have, you know, conversations after the meeting and the retreat to try to get prepared for tonight, that we may find that we need, you know, you're going to need buckets of resources to do specific things. And we were just with another lawyer from another district today who was saying, you know, that yes, there's the student-based formula, but then sometimes you have to think about areas where, you know, maybe you support small schools. And that has nothing, you know, that has nothing technically to do with the student weight, but that it's a value that we have, and that's something that needs to go in that formula. So, it may not be as clean as weighted student formula only. I think there are going to be other considerations that are unique to our district context and the values of this community that will play out in ways that influence that formula.
Ms. Barksdale, can I take a test shot at it, just based on the word you said, which I think our current model, which probably people are watching, but it's very staffing-based and it's the number of students, and then that drives everything. How many people you get, how many teachers you get, how many APs you get, how many counselors you get. And it's very staffing-driven. We actually have guardrails up today that say, "We don't take into consideration the type of students you have or the needs of the students you have. It's just driven by the number you have." And I think this effort will actually say, "We're going to lower the guardrails and let other factors come into play to try to find out, is there a better way of allocating resources in our district than just the limit based on sheerly the numbers," which is where the guardrails are today. There might be blends in the future. It might be some mix of number and type and demographics and needs. But I think, you know, you also made the comment about without any community input. And I think, at least for me, why I'm comfortable supporting this, is I've heard community input the entire time I'm on the board about concerns about inequity between resource allocations in certain campuses and that we're not giving, we're not meeting the needs of certain students. And as we went through the budget reductions last year, some campuses might have been hit harder, and they were saying, "Well, you're not taking into consideration the type of students that we have and the needs of the campus." But our formulas didn't allow for it. It was all driven based on numbers. And so, I think I've heard enough community input to say, "We need to do something different." But I think what I heard Dr. Starfren say, which is credit to her to finding a funder for this level of multi-year, multi-month, and extensive engagement, is we need extensive community input to find out what that something different should be, what are all the factors. And as Mr. Snyder referred to, the winners and losers, there probably will be some. And under various options, there'll be different winners and losers. What I heard Ms. Conley Abram talking about is then you have to look at how you phase it in. Do you grandfather some? What's the timing? I think this is a commitment to do something different. And so, but I'm certain that we need to do something different. What I'm equally certain is I have no idea what that something different is. But we need a process to figure it out. And we can say that we're, either the system now is what we're going to live with and we're not going to do a project, or we're going to do a project with some expectation it will be something different. And I think this effort will actually lower the guardrails, allow us to consider other variables and see if we can come up with a better allocation methodology than we'd have today. At least that's my perspective. It may not be what other board members share. But I actually think this will give us a more explainable process by which people will then determine, they can see how the money gets allocated, and they can get a better sense that there's an association between students, student needs, and funding at a campus level, which I think today seems to be disconnected.
Yeah. If I may respond, we are in agreement on much of what you mentioned, which is transparency, and this district has won awards, especially with this administration, for transparency and budgeting and getting better. Something has to be done differently. And you're right, we are in a staffing-formula-based guidelines right now. I think what I feel like we're doing right now is what we are criticized for as a board, which is the school district gives the community a false option, which is, "And now we're doing this. And now, community, you decide how we're going to do it." But the "this," which is like moving from a staffing-based formula to a student-based formula, has already been decided. So, to your point, yeah, if we're going, you said, I think very aptly, something could bubble up, something could be different. We're not sure what that is. I think we're committing to what that is as student-based formulas.
Potentially, right? It could be a blend. It could be a mix. It's just something different that I think will wait, give some weight to the types of students at a campus. What that weight is, how it's phased in, who gets what weighting, that's what you need lots of input for. I think, for me, I'm comfortable saying to the public, I think we need to weight in some way differently the type of students rather than just the sheer number of them. I'm comfortable saying that, to me, seems reasonable. What that's going to look like, I don't know. So, yes, if the public's uncomfortable with saying, "You're going to consider the weight of the students in the founding allocations," then yes, maybe board members are not comfortable with that. I, for one, think going down this path is actually a smart move, and I give credit to Dr. Starfren for finding funding to have the level of effort to do this, because it feels like something that the time is right. And I think the reason there's outside funders willing to do system resources is it seems like for too long, school districts have funded on numbers of students, not on the needs of students. Again, don't know what the outcome's going to look like, but I'm comfortable telling the public, and I think I could walk out tomorrow saying, "We're going to try to improve the funding formula to reflect the needs of the students."
We are, again, in agreement. I think we're having a semantic difference here, and it's about process. And it is, we're going to do something. This board is obviously ready to take action and has been for some time. And Dr. Starfren has come and guns-a-blazing with this as a central issue to our administration. It's just a matter of feeling like we're binding ourselves or obligating ourselves to a particular outcome. I think if I heard commentary correct tonight, these funders, and yes, kudos for finding funders, first of all, to do this work for an urban, large urban school district, fantastic job there. But there is some obligatory response in terms of what they would expect. If the work is just done, as Dr. Starfren said, and then do nothing, I don't think this would happen for that board. But that wouldn't be a reasonable expectation of a funder. The reasonable expectation is, we would take steps toward student-based funding. So, I feel like we're kind of pointing ourselves in that direction, just want to call it, so everyone's very clear. There could be some mix, sure. But that's the direction we're moving in with this vote.
Dr. Starfren.
If I understand.
Yeah. Dr. Starfren.
Yeah. And I, you know, again, I do see it, it's clear to me, I do see it differently than you do on the engagement with the community. I mean, when I started, you weren't on the board, but we had, I mean, so many meetings on the strategic plan, just to get a superintendent hired, I can't, I forgot the number of community meetings I had to go through to hear what people were concerned about. And all this was even before, when y'all were doing the search for the superintendent, you had groups out there collecting information, which is what we used as our starting point for the strategic plan. And while, no, the community didn't say weighted student formula, they did say evaluate and reallocate necessary funding of schools based on identified needs of the kids. They also said, they tried to have us, as early as 2009, change how the federal dollars followed kids and state resources. They wanted us to try to change that, which was, you know, something bigger than us that we couldn't, we couldn't change. Now, at the end of the day, there's three ways that you fund schools: staff, buildings, kids. It's just three big buckets. There's not a lot of, like, big sexy ideas about how to go about it. People weren't filling the building thing. They thought that was just not realistic for the values of Austin. They certainly understood the staffing, but they knew that wasn't getting us anywhere. And then we went, you know, with students. And in all the research, everything, especially the district advisory council tells us, is please, use a best practice. Don't go create something that we don't know is going to work, right? I mean, just, and you know the co-chairs of the DAC, so, and I think you know them well enough to know how they see that. And also, we have our budget and finance advisory committee. So, the people that, and the areas where the best work has been done is around a student-based allocation design. And so, as always, what we do, at least this administration has tried to do for Austin Independent School District, it's family and the community, is we don't just bring you a bunch of junk. We bring you what is best in show, the best in the country, the best in the state. And we turn on a lot of things that we could do that I think are just softer and might be interesting to explore, but don't have any teeth to them that would give me the confidence that if I were to recommend something to this board, that AISD wouldn't be a better district for having done it. So, you know, and I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, everything that I've heard from the community is they're asking us to figure out a way to do it. Do they have the exact right words that match our words? No, because as we explored it, this is what we came up against. And as we certainly have shared and talked to people about it, they haven't said to us, "Don't do it. Don't," I mean, you know, doing something has got to be better than where we are today. But, I mean, I don't know how this board is going to resolve what comes first, the big community engagement, at which points and which ones count as legitimate enough for the administration to be able to bring a recommendation to the board. But I do feel like we have done an enormous amount of vetting and organizing and talking to people and looking next door to nationwide to bring you the best recommendation that's out there and the best people who do this work. And outside of that, and the groups that we claim are representatives for our community, for our day-to-day work and this kind of grind, using advisory committees, if that's not good enough, then we need to have a different conversation about what it is that the board wants to use to vet these ideas. Because if it's not the board-approved advisory committee or, you know, task force or, you know, oversight committees that you have established, then what we've been doing is following board policy and procedures. And if we wanted to do something else, then you can send us back to the drawing board and give us that direction on what else you want to see for engagement before we go down this road. But right now, I felt like we used and exhausted all existing guidance from the board on how we got to here tonight.
Ms. Torres.
Let me see if I can try and synthesize what I think's happening here. And I guess I'd wrap it or try to couch it in the context of, there seems to be a lack of clarity in the proposed project plan that's been submitted to the funder for the money that would be needed to conduct this project. And I think what I'm hearing from the board is that a project plan for something like this would really be a phased approach that would have, at least in the many projects that I've done like this, three phases. The first one being the data collection and analysis phase that would end in a report to the board and next steps in the project. The next phase would be a discussion of the data and the development of potential improved models and vetting of the proposed models with the community and stakeholders that would culminate with a recommendation to the board of the model that is most appropriate and supported by the community for this district. And then the third phase would be an implementation phase with review by the board after one year to ensure that we are indeed achieving the improvements in the district, that this new funding approach would be designed to achieve. Some of the items in the agenda item appear to be putting the cart before the horse, and I think this is where the rub is, before such a phased approach, if you buy that approach, can take place and therefore, it appears as though some of the answers are already predetermined. And I think that's where we hurt ourselves, because we, the community feels that we go down a path and that we actually have already got things decided before we allow a process to play out. I think finding the answers to what I would call the phase one, the data collection and analysis, is extremely important, because I do think there will be some surprises for people as to where the inequities really are and how we are actually better funding some of our kids now. And as Mr. Snyder, I think, and Ms. Barksdale have said in the past, there's going to be some winners and losers. And when that starts to be made clear, I think some folks are going to be very surprised. So, I think it's important that we do get these data obtained by someone who can do it in an objective manner so that we put that issue to bed once and for all and let the data speak for itself. But I do think it's important for us to be provided with, by the superintendent, a project plan that tells us how this project is going to be phased and implemented and where the various inputs will be, so that it's clear in writing exactly what will happen at what point in time and what decisions will be made at various points in the process. I think, given that, there would be comfort by the board to be able to support what we need to do. I personally think, you know, we need to move forward on this particular agenda item, but I would ask that we receive much greater clarity agenda item, but I would ask that we receive much greater clarity in the development of a project plan that has points in the process, where the board knows exactly what's going to be completed, and what will be involved in each phase, and what approvals the board will be giving at various points in time. And, and I think this is the most important thing, is that if it takes more time to do something, then the community wants us to spend the time to do it, and not set an agenda item that says we have a target of a particular date and the school year, and if we're not ready at that point in time, then we're not ready at that point in time. But I think the way the wording is in here, it gives the impression that it's more than a target, it gives the impression that it's a fait accompli.
Mr. Guzman.
Thank you. You know, I don't see any way that we can not do something. I don't see any way that we should not do anything. I remember this issue going back for decades, actually, and there's been discussions, presentations made before this board, and I think several of you have mentioned that already. And the issue is alive and well. Whether anybody has documented it accurately, even the Civil Rights Project, I haven't read it in its entirety, so I'm not sure whether I can say that it has documented it. I look forward to finishing it and seeing if it is. We have been criticized about the process of putting proposals forward, I understand, but I venture to say that we would be more seriously criticized if we didn't put this proposal forward. I agree that we need to. There are a lot of particulars that need to be worked out, and I'm in agreement with that, but I think, I think I hear all of us say that the will of the board is to move forward, and that this is something that we definitely want to do, and we need to do. And once and for all, document in the scientific process that it exists, or doesn't exist, and where, and then what do we do about it. So, I hear us all saying, correct me if I'm wrong, but I hear us all saying that, yes, this is something we want to do. Thank you.
Ms. Moya.
Thank you. In listening to the conversations tonight, and also lessons learned from the past, is that, is that where we can really help ourselves is to be clearer in our words, whether they be in our agenda items or wherever else. So, for example, I believe that the school year 1415 is driven by the strategic plan. And if that's the case, then it's helpful to say that this target school year 1415 is because of the strategic plan, so that, and even though some of us may know that, we all know that, the board members, our community members do not know that. And so, those are the kinds of things that, when we write our information up, we need to write it for someone who doesn't know everything that we know, so that it is very well understood. Because I think that if that was the case in this particular item, we may not have needed to have such a long conversation about it, because some of the, some of the questions and discomfort would have been taken care of by more plain, clear wording, and, you know, and even, maybe even some of the, you know, something like what Mr. Torres was talking about, you know, about the different phases. But my point is, I think we just need to write things in a way that makes sure that, that all of the things we're thinking when we write it are down on the paper and don't just stay in our heads, you know, because we do happen, I mean, I know I do this all the time, so, you know, you know, and even reflecting on my comments from before, you know, I know that, you know, that we haven't made up our mind on what's going to happen regarding this issue. I just know that something needs to be researched, and we need to figure it out, and then we need to decide what's going to, you know, what we're going to do. But, so, but nobody else knows what I'm thinking unless I say it out loud. So, I think it's just really helpful for us to make sure that we, that we don't leave any concepts out of the things we're writing, because that's one of the places where I think, over the past, that one of the lessons learned I have had, is that, is that if we spell things out in a clear way, to make sure that there's no room for misunderstanding, I think we could save ourselves and staff a lot of, a lot of pain. So, I would just, you know, take that for what it's worth, and perhaps that'll help us move along. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Ms. Snyder?
Well, I mean, I, as I said previously, I'm totally open to doing a study to find out. I just don't want to be put in a position where this obligates us to do something different. I mean, the research may find that, you know, certain things are not necessarily true out of what we're doing. We may have input from the public that says, no, we don't like it this way, we may like it another way. But, I mean, again, looking at the agenda item, it says, "To implement a student-based allocation model, open print, weighted student formula, closed print." And, I mean, I would completely agree with the process that Mr. Torres proposed, and, you know, if we want to modify the motion to have that included in there, that's something I could thoroughly support.
Wait a second, Robert. Modify the motion to include what?
The process that Mr. Torres proposed in his remarks.
Well, was that, did you do something?
Mine is off, but my phone was directly below it, which I've since moved. I apologize if that was the source of the problem.
So, I'm trying to think about rewording the motion.
Let's have people, give some people who want some input, before we get to the revised. Ms. Bradley?
Okay.
Just make sure we got all the input. Ms. Bradley?
Mine is just going to be really simple. I, to support Mr. Torres's recommendation, and I guess my question to Dr. Kostarfin is, looking, hearing what Mr. Torres said, how does that impact this, your recommendation?
I think Mr. Torres has to answer that. What is it specifically that changes about the parameters that would need to be adjusted, based on what you said? Because I couldn't assume, I don't know what would change.
I think the only thing that really changes is that the implementing, the wording that says that, you know, it'll be weighted student formula, until the model actually says that that's what it's going to be. So that, it may be weighted student, it may, we may develop a model that's something different, you know, more than likely, that's what it's going to be, because as you said, we're using a staffing formula. It's probably not going to be a building formula, but if they come up with a hybrid of some combination, then it may not be this. And then, there may be something different that is developed for Austin, because we always know Austin wants to do things their own way. So, I think that's the only thing that's really different, is we just have a phased approach, and at the end of each phase, we understand what we've learned from that phase, and move to the next phase. It just clarifies the phases, really.
And I particularly do not have a problem with this. And I'm going to say this, and I do not mean to be critical when I say this. I know I heard Mr. Torres say what he felt the rub is, and I'm going to say what I feel the rub is. And I know I heard Dr. Kostarfin say that there has been an exhaustive amount of work that has been put into getting to this point, but that has not been the case with the board. So, we had, as someone said, a couple hours, or two, two to three hours at a retreat, we had one more meeting after that. Now, even I expected to hear a little bit more. And although I am supportive of this, and I have said and stated that I am supportive of this, and has, have been supportive of this, when I heard that the Houston ISD was doing decentralization when it comes to their budget. But I have to say that, that when we're, when it comes to dealing with the board, for some odd reason, we cannot get the same amount of, I don't know what to say, attention, or information that can help us make this informative decision. And I believe, had we had that prior, then maybe it wouldn't be so difficult to get to this point today. And again, I don't mean for it to be critical, I don't. But every time that a recommendation is brought to us, we end up doing the same thing over and over. And I think that we tend to lose focus, that everything that we do should always focus on the bottom line, which is always the students. And we cannot continue to go in circles, over and over again, about any recommendation that come to us. So, I think it would be hoolus, as I heard you say, that we get the amount of information that we need to make that informative decision, so that we do not have to spend almost an hour, almost an hour, on something that was on consent.
So let me take a shot at something. As I think there's a challenge with Dr. Kostarfin, correct me if I'm wrong here, with a little bit of a catch-22, which is, I think what she's looking for is some commitment from the board to move down the path of evaluating this option, so she can go to a potential funder, or say the board's committed to at least looking at it. And maybe that's the, a little bit, we've got two different things we're trying to do. We've got budget parameters, which in general are, you know, high-level overview, and this one is, the item that got added is a more specific item, that is really longer in scope, bigger in its nature, and really, an important initiative on the part of the district, to evaluate how we fund today, and are there better paths. And I'm wondering, is this discussion, is there a way to say, we keep 12, but maybe we need to think about a little bit different words on 12, that might allow us to get to something that we can agree on, knowing this discussion, I think people have heard, and Dr. Starfin's heard, and the public's heard, they've been watching, kind of what the intent is, which is, we haven't locked ourselves into anything, but other than to go investigate, and I would say, almost certainly doing something different, although no guarantee. And the board will retain the right, if for some reason. And I think the superintendent, if it came back, and they did this analysis, and it determined that what we're doing today is the absolute best way to fund schools, I don't think the administration would recommend a change. I think that's highly unlikely, if not, almost certainly unlikely to happen. So in that context, I'm going to propose a potential word change. 12, and the board, and this is going to be a little bit longer, so bear with me a second, and I'll...
It's 13.
I have 13. I'm actually looking at the book.
It's 13.1.
13.1, but item 12 on 13.1, which is the last budget parameter. So, because I think we're talking about the narrative that is in the agenda item, but what we're really approving is the budget parameter itself. We're not approving the narrative in the budget item, but really the budget parameter. And the budget parameter says, and this is, I'm going to include the wording, I'm going to suggest we change, and feel free to edit this, "Move down the path of, one, increasing student, I'm sorry, increasing school level autonomy, effectiveness, and innovation. Two, ensuring that funds follow students based on their individual needs. And three, decreasing disparities in per-people funding." The district will, will work in a phased approach, with experts in the community, to research and analyze the options associated with the phase-in of the implementation of a revised funding model, considering, at least in part, student weights is a basis for resource allocation, comma, targeted to begin in the 2014-15 school year.
So did you write all that down, so that we can make sure it's in the minutes?
I've got it written down.
Okay.
So, I know people need to see that, but the intent is that we're, we need to start down this path, it's going to be phased, we're going to potentially consider student weights, and that we're looking to do something revised. I guess for me, I strongly believe that what we do today isn't the best, perfect model, and that I've heard enough over the years to know that we need to do something different. Again, I don't know what that difference is, but if we don't commit to doing something, we're not going to get a change. And we can't, we don't have the resources internally, or the best, the experts, or the process, to go find out what that something different is. And credit to Dr. Starfin and her team for finding a funder who's willing to do system work to get this project launched. And I think it would, someone used the word behoove, so I'll go with it, behoove us to go down this process. But I do think it's got to be done in phases, I think there's got to be check-ins, I think there will be. I think we'll end up with something different. I think there'll be some schools that end up higher and lower, and I think we'll be surprised by some of the things we find. But at the end of the day, I think something different is going to come out of it. And then you phase in what that something different is. But I think the intent is to start in school year 1415. It could be a very small phase-in, it could be a very big phase-in. What we did see, the public may not have seen this, but there was some report that showed, I think when Chicago did some sort of weighted student funding, they found that some campuses were as far as maybe 140% above, and 80% below, and just a wide range of where their target was. That doesn't mean you get there all at once. But I'm pretty certain, if not absolutely certain, that what we do today won't be exactly what we do in the future. But we need to start somewhere, and I think Dr. Kostarfin, I believe, I'm going to say this, because you're looking for a commitment from the board to, to support moving forward, and the commitment is reflected in this budget parameter, but it's not a commitment to what that answer is going to be, just a commitment to support an effort that will come up with something different. Is that fair to say?
Fair enough.
Okay. So, that'd be my proposal for a wording change. I'd be happy to read it again, or other people have other suggestions, happy to be open for that as well.
Well, could you read it again, but if you would, please write it down, so that we can give it to Elaine, so that we can make sure that it's accurate, accurately reflected in the, in the minutes?
Okay, let me read it again, and then I'll, I've got it written down, but I'll write it down to a more legible format. But just so, maybe the public's not, who's not watching, we have 12 budget parameters, most of them fairly standard. We added a 12th budget parameter this year, which really focuses on the launching of this initiative, an effort to evaluate moving to a different funding model, potentially based, at least in part, on student weights. So, item 12, I'm going to propose, would be the following wording, "To move down the path of, one, increasing school level autonomy, effectiveness, and innovation. Two, ensuring that funds follow students based on their individual needs. And three, decreasing disparities in per-people funding." The district-
Period. Is that a period?
It's a comma.
Oh, it's a comma.
The district, it's one of these run-on sentences, sorry. That's not actually part of the wording, the run-on sentence phrase. Okay, "The district will work in a phased approach with experts in the community, to research and analyze the options associated with the phase-in of implementation of a revised funding model, considering, at least in part, student weights is a basis for resource allocation, comma, targeted to begin in the 2014-15 school year." And I know that's hard for people, when you just give so much words to sense, but I'm open to other people if they have a better suggestion. Ms. Moya?
I'm not going to try to make a better suggestion, I'm just going to say that, that for item 12 in the budget parameter, I don't think, I don't think we need to spell out everything about how the work is going to be done. I think that's what, what the, what the information is under the background information, that's probably where all of that should have been in the, you know, to, but perhaps, maybe I'm wrong, but that's probably where it should have been, because, because the budget parameter, the way you read it, is different from all the rest of them. And so, I'm certain that the administration wrote this budget parameter this way, because all of the rest of them are written like this. And the only problem here is that what you were saying, and what everyone else has been getting to, wasn't in here, and so that's where, where all of the discomfort came from. But, so, so I think that, I mean, I'm not going to try to, try to offer up something else, because all the words that you just said, need to be said somewhere, need to be put in this document someplace. And I, I find it hard to believe that the superintendent and staff, in developing their scope of work for this project, you know, do not have a phased-in approach, and different levels of work, and different points and check-in, and all that kind of stuff. And so, I'm not sure that we need to say it in the budget parameter, but I do believe it needs to, you know, it needs to be said somewhere, but suggesting, and this is what I heard, so correct me if I'm wrong, but, but suggesting that, that the superintendent and staff weren't planning some kind of a phased-in approach is probably not fair to, to the staff. But I realize it needs to be said, so that the public understands what's going on. And so, those are two different things. You know, they're two different things. And so, I want to make sure that, that nobody is misunderstanding what's happening- And so I want to make sure that, that nobody is misunderstanding what's happening here. I don't believe that anyone is saying that the superintendent and staff do not have a work plan on how they're going to do all this stuff. You know, but, but there are things that need to be said out loud and on paper in order for, in order for our school district community to understand what work is going on and how it's going to happen. And so, again, lessons learned is we need to communicate things in a way so that, so that people are not confused, whoever those people are, and whether it be board members or community members, so that everybody understands what work the district's doing and how and why, and so that, so that we don't continue to be told, you're not communicating with us and you're not telling us. Because we are, you know, but we're not, we're not using enough words, I guess, you know? And so I get, I just really don't, I'm just concerned that, that the superintendent and staff think that we're saying you're not, you don't have a work plan, because I'm sure you do. We just haven't seen it. And so therefore, all of this other stuff has happened because maybe to Ms. Bradley's point, you know, there's been a lot of work going on in the administration, but the board members didn't have very many touchpoints to really be as well informed as we would like to be.
Mr. Guzman.
I'd just like to be, I'd just like to be clear that, are we saying that we can study this matter, this issue? And, but we don't, we don't need to do anything about it if we don't want to? And if that's what we're saying is a funding source, comfortable with that. I mean, I would, if I were funding it and I were putting in 1.9 million, I'd want some kind of commitment that something was going to be done other than a study. And so what is it that we're saying?
Okay, I can only speak myself, right? I am certain that we'll come up with something different than what we're doing today. As Ms. Parkstall's word, the guardrails that we have today, which is staffing based on a number of students only, I think is completely inadequate to really meet the needs of our students and the campuses. But what that something different is, I'm not sure. But yet, the board retains the right, whatever board exists, whenever the proposal comes back, after all the community engagement, after all the experts, they have the right to vote at that point in time. And I can't speak for what the future board does. If the future board chooses to, to not do anything and basically say, we want to stay with the status quo, you know, if that's what they feel is the appropriate thing and that's what the community says, then in some ways you'll have to be answerable to the funders and to any future funder that looks at this district and says, we choose not to do it. It's possible. I don't think it's likely. But I don't know that we can guarantee that something different will happen in the sense that we're absolutely going to change something different. But for me, I just think it would be so unlikely that we wouldn't do something different based on what we're going to find out. I just don't know what that different is. But yes, I mean, if board members at that point in time, five, you know, five board members decide they don't want to change anything, they think the current system is the best possible, or for whatever reason, they don't want to change it, I guess that's a risk that the funder has either got to decide to take or not take. But I'm not sure, given that we've got a governance model that's based on the majority of the board, you can guarantee that a future board will vote to support the administration's recommendation, whatever that's going to look like. And I don't think at this point, we even know what it's going to look like, or we can't even define what it's going to possibly might be. So that may not answer your question, Sam, in a way that, but I do think that whatever we do tonight, then Dr. Starfin's going to have to go to the funder and say, based on whatever they've watched, heard people say, do they feel comfortable enough that this board's supportive of moving, considering different alternatives? Or do they not? And they could come back and say, we're willing to still fund with, you know, the project or not. It's their money. So, I mean, I think, I just, I can't imagine that we, that this district and this board, if we found out we have better ways to fund based on student needs, we wouldn't do something different. But I guess it's possible. Ms. Parkstall.
I want to point out that I just am hearing a very strong conflation of two or three issues. Every person sitting here, and I do feel comfortable speaking for every person sitting here, wants to address inequities in the district, absolutely. And there are some things to celebrate here. Dr. Kostarfin's leadership and her administration for going out and finding a funder to address this issue. That, so that's off the table. What's being conflated is an issue that I raised, and I think trustee Torres did as well, it's a process issue. We're not talking about the desire to do something, or the willingness, or the ability of this board to move forward. I think I made this very clear when we talked about this at our retreat, in terms of my point of view on an issue like this one. We're hearing the funder's going to have expectations, of course they are. If they're going to invest 1.9 million dollars in this district and put it in the hands of Dr. Kostarfin and the administration to figure out what to do next, of course they're going to have expectations. We need to make, we need to just, I would recommend that, I make it as clear as possible to anyone that is listening, we will be at some point fulfilling expectations as defined by this funder, which, as my understanding is, is weighted toward student-based funding. That's it. We're not, so let's, let's untether the issue of doing something versus doing nothing, or people's willingness, or wanting to address equity, or the strategic plan. That's one conversation. The conversation that I'm having or the issue I'm raising is just about process. We are putting up new guardrails. We're now based on staffing-based formula. We're introducing something new to this district, which took my strong agreement with what I think is the majority of the board, is that student-based funding probably is a very good thing for this district, probably. I don't know, there are definitely some things to find out. I just want to be transparent about process. We're obligating ourselves to something with moving forward with a funder. We can't put our superintendent in the position of going hat in hand and asking for something and, or, you know, soliciting support for this district and then kind of like shrugging it off as a board. And I don't think that that would happen, first for reputational sake, and then because something's going to have to be done about funding in this district. But definitely want to untether those two ideas, that applying scrutiny to this process does not mean not supporting this idea, or moving forward with it, or celebrating the successes that we have here, no matter how this vote goes, which again, is Dr. Kostarfin's leadership addressing the equity issue on a timeframe, which is what she was hired to do, the five-year timeframe with the strategic plan, and finding a funder to do it. So just on the record, untether those issues. That's it.
And let me just, kind of, I think it's very helpful and very accurate clarification. I think the conflation sometimes is, there's a, I'll use this phrase, it's a little bit to understand, difficult to understand the exact process until we actually have the funding, have the plan, know what the experts are going to be. I'm not sure we even know who's going to do the work. And I think there'd be an expectation appropriate that if this goes, there'll be a project plan brought back to the board, the board will have a chance to weigh in, there'll be different steps, there'll be a timeframe, like other projects that we've done. So I think that the catch 22 sometimes is, do I need to know all the process steps and how it's going to look before I decide to go do this? And I, at least for me, the answer is no, but I think that I understand the commitment that we need a process and a project plan that I think will have, I think the administration's probably already working on, there'll be more detail coming up. And I have a feeling there'll be iterations of that based on what we hear, and based on what they find. And I think to Mr. Torres' point about the data and collection, will actually, the data collection phase will actually drive some of the process after that. So I think that if I'm hearing the board correctly, we need a good engagement process, we need a well-defined project plan. Some of that exists today, some of that's going to exist in the future. And I think our experience with this district is we know that process is important in this town. And so whether we move in this direction or not, like the board's basically giving a signal tonight if they approve this budget parameter, that we're moving in this direction. But hopefully, the board also understands, there will be opportunities in the future for input into process, into the options, both in the board level, the community level, and we seem to make sure in the board, I guess Dr. Starfin, the board's requesting that as soon as that project plan, if the funding comes through, that the board have a chance to understand what that project plan's going to look like and the process will look like with an opportunity for input into the process. Mr. Guzman.
Yeah, I'm more than comfortable with everything that has been said. But I do see a potential scenario that if, because somebody brought up the issue of, you know, somebody, there may be winners, there may be losers. So that I think, I think, I think we intuitively know that, or have heard throughout the years and feel, I've talked to a lot of people, that the inequities that there may be exist in the east side of town. Having said that, if a study showed that and documented that, there's another side of town that would potentially lose or go through some readjustments. And so if that side of town packs this hall in, you know, throughout the process, then, you know, there has to be some leadership on this board to say, well, we've seen the study, and the study shows certain things, and it's validated, and we should go forward. And/or, or not. And so I'm just saying that that's a potential scenario that's always out there, for that matter, unless, you know, we abide by what a study that has been, and given, given that it's vetted completely in the community and so on and so forth, or do we not go with the study based on what we hear, either at these meetings or in the meetings out in the community? And that's, that's a potential scenario that I see, and it's always there.
But who knows, right? We don't know what the study's going to say until we get there. Okay, so there was originally, we don't actually have a motion for this even agenda item. Well, I think we took this one off.
Took it off, so now it needs a motion.
It needs motion. I guess the question is whether people are comfortable with the wording for budget item 12 that I proposed, or if they have an alternative suggestion. Mr. Schneider.
Mr. Williams, for those of us that are exceptionally dense, can you please reread 12, just so I've got a real good, clear idea of what you're proposing?
That would be me.
Okay, thank you.
That would be you?
Yeah, that's definitely me.
This is, okay, item 12. To move down the path of, one, increasing school level autonomy, effectiveness, and innovation; two, ensuring that funds follow students based on their individual needs; and three, decreasing disparities in per pupil funding. That's the wording that's currently in the agenda item, that would not change. This is where the change will pose, which incorporates some of the existing wording and some new wording. So here it goes. The district will work in a phased approach with experts in the community to implement a revised funding model, considering at least in part, student weights is a basis for resource allocation, targeted to begin in the 2014-15 school year. And I think as Ms. Moya pointed out, this has got a little bit more content than we would normally have, but part of it's because of the nature of this item. I think it's probably helpful and important to call this out in a more substantive way so everybody's pretty clear about what we did and didn't approve, and not just that it's buried in some agenda item that we didn't necessarily approve. So I'm happy to read that last part again, or if people are comfortable to have a motion with that revised wording for the budget parameters on item 13-1. Mr. Torres, I'm sorry, Mr. Schneider.
I'm comfortable with that. I would just ask that direction be given to the administration, that the phased approach that Mr. Torres outlined be given consideration for implementation of what they want to do for the study.
Okay.
That doesn't need to go in the, in the motion.
I think Dr. Starfin actually wrote that down, I saw her.
It was not intended to be, it was just a request that be done.
Okay, so we'll entertain a motion on item 13-1 for the 12 budget parameters with the wording that I suggested, if people are comfortable with that. Ms. Moya.
Move approval of consent agenda item 13.1 with the amended language for item 12 as presented by Mr. President Williams.
Okay, is there a second? Second, Ms. Torres. Discussion. Ms. Bradley.
Just, just one quick question, because you said experts in the community.
And the community, I'm sorry.
And the community, okay.
Experts and the community. Okay. So other questions, comments? On favorite motion, please raise your right hand. Passion and answer, we board members here. Thank you all very much. Okay, thank you all for your patience and indulgence. Very important item and a very important initiative. And Dr. Starfin, thanks to you and your team for hopefully securing the funding to launch that project. And we'll look forward to additional updates to the board in the future as that moves forward. Okay, let us now turn to the superintendent's report. And we have one item on that discussion tonight, which is revision to the facility master plan framework. Dr. Starfin.
Mr. President, trustees, tonight, the board is scheduled to take action on the proposed modifications to the facility master plan framework that the board adopted in November 2011. At the September 10th board work session, you have the opportunity to review and discuss the proposed changes. The most significant change, which you did discuss on September 10th, would be to revise the facility master plan framework to permit a biannual rather than an annual cycle for AAFRs, of course, with the consideration that there are certain board policies and other issues that may arise that the board still has the discretion to take actions as it relates to schools and programming. But this revision would permit the completion of one AAFR cycle before beginning the next cycle the following January. Mr. President, Board of Trustees, that concludes our presentation.
Ms. Starfin, let's open up for comments or questions regarding the framework or a motion to approve the modifications. Ms. Moya.
Mr. President, I want to make a motion at this time. I move that the Board of Trustees approve the proposed modifications to the facilities' master plan framework as presented by the superintendent in our agenda items exhibit A.
Thank you. Ms. Moya, is there a second? Second, Ms. Torres. Discussion. On favorite motion, please raise your right hand. Passion and answer for the board members on the dice, all seven. Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes the televised portion of our meeting this evening. The board will move to executive session. It is now 8:51.